With the road call and Elizabeth Andrade.
Present.
Mario.
Seola.
Gloria Pacheco.
Here.
John Ferreira.
Here.
And Cynthia Sevigny. I'm here and as well as William Kenny, the city planner, and Patty Akia, our recording clerk, and Michael Ferreira from Far River Government Television. Okay, and now we have item number.
What?
The open meeting law.
Right here. Thank you. Okay, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Now we'll go to item number one on the agenda. Item number one is Form C definitive subdivision file number 20-211. Location Highland Farms Two, Highland Avenue, Hayfield Lane and Courtney Street. Assessors map U-4 lot one and U-5 lot one. This has been tabled from the August 10th meeting and the request was submitted by SciTech on behalf of the owner applicant, which is St. Vincent's Services Incorporated, for a proposed 38 single-family house lot subdivision with a minimum of 12,000 square feet of area and 10 and 100 feet of street frontage per lot, with requested waivers for the proposed roadway systems in the S District Plan entitled definitive subdivision plan of land Highland Farms Two, map U-4 lot one, U-5 lot one, Hayfield Lane and Courtney Lane dated 3/7/2020.
Great.
All set.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguiar, I'm the senior project manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city as well as Dartmouth and Rainham. You may recall, we were in a month or two ago for the initial public hearing with regards to this subdivision, which is the extension of the Highland Farms subdivision that you see currently built above Highland Avenue. We have been working with the city on a number of items, most notably recently with regards to what improvements, planning, engineering, and Department of Public Works wanted us to do to Courtney Street to improve that section of Courtney, which our subdivision would connect to. So we met probably a month ago or three weeks ago, had a great discussion out in the field. We had put together a plan of what we felt was the result of that meeting. That plan is now in the hands of Arthur Frank, who is drafting an agreement so that the applicants can enter into the city, because that's technically separate from the Form C subdivision, but that really needs to come first before we should finish up on the Form C. So that's in the works. So what I would like to do is ask for the matter to be tabled to the October meeting in hopes that all those Is will be dotted and Ts will be crossed, and at that time as well, we'll have the final review letters in from engineering with regards to the subdivision itself. So hopefully that meeting within a month, we'd be able to get everything straightened out. I did want to come and at least give you an update of where we were at and ask you in person for that extension for one month. That's all. If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
I have no problem with the extension on the cul-de-sac. Has that been worked out with any of the area homes?
With the homeowners that were at the end?
Yes.
I have not had a discussion with any one of the homeowners. I don't know if the owners have. They're not here this evening, but I will double check and I'll make sure that we have an answer for them. Again, my position from the last time was is that we presented a plan that is legal and that we're allowed to extend that cul-de-sac, but I think we can, right now from my understanding is that's the route that we're going, and we're just getting the rest of the stuff reviewed through engineering. But I'll check and see if anybody has actually spoken to them.
Okay. I have no further questions. Does anyone on my board have questions? Bill?
I just, I think nothing would make me happier than to kick this off till October.
Yep.
So that's great. Time moments are now running. There's no constructive receipt coming.
Correct, yeah. I mean, whatever extensions we need to sign, that's not a problem. Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Our October meeting is what day, Patty?
Nineteenth.
The 19th? Table to October 19th? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we table this to October 19th meeting.
Second.
A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And you're here also on the repetitive petition, and that is owner applicant Pont and Associates Real Estate LLC. The location, 722 Spencer Street. The assessors map D-8-57. The request submitted by SciTech on behalf of Pont and Associates Real Estate LLC under Master General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 16, and under Section 86 to 487 of the zoning laws, zoning bylaws, with respect to a variance request, which was denied by the zoning board of appeals on July 16th, 2020, to subdivide existing 19,936-plus square feet of parcel into two 9,900-plus square feet lots, leaving an existing single-family dwelling on lot number one while constructing a new single-family dwelling on lot number two, waiving requirements in the South District. The current request is for a determination by the planning board that the applicant's new proposal to subdivide the existing parcel into two parcels leaving the existing dwelling on one parcel nonconforming, and to construct a new single-family dwelling on a new conforming parcel with 100 feet of frontage and 12,000 square feet area. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to install a new sewer main within Spencer Street that will serve the existing dwelling, the proposed dwelling, and for additional dwellings along Spencer Street that reflects specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the denial was issued, and for the consent of the planning board to allow a new hearing by the zoning board of appeals prior to the expiration of two years after the date of the denial. Go.
Good evening again. For the record, Dan Aguiar of SciTech Engineering. As the chairwoman stated, this petition was before the zoning board of appeals on July 16th, 2020. That application was proposing to subdivide this parcel into two parcels, each being 9,900 square feet. At the time, we were splitting it up evenly, but what that did was created two nonconforming parcels. And the reason why we had done that at that time is because currently in this location, these homes are serviced by septic systems. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough room to put a septic system on each lot. The zoning board of appeals, however, doesn't look at the need for a septic system to be one of the requirements for granting of a hardship. And if you've watched any of those meetings over the last two or three, you will see that they are in a little bit of a dilemma with regards to subdividing lots where you're leaving, where you're taking a conforming lot and creating no conforming lots. So what we did was we went back and we looked at, okay, what we should do is create one lot that's conforming. So now we've cut down our requested zoning relief in half rather than two lots that are not conforming. Now we only have one. And in doing so, we would be proposing to install a sewer line at the owner's expense in Spencer Street that would service both these homes. It would get a failed septic system out of the ground that currently serves 722, and it would also give two abutting neighbors to the west the ability to tie in to a sewer line. So I think when you look at the two proposals, when you see creating two nonconforming lots of 9,900 square feet each, both with septic systems, and you compare that to creating two lots, one conforming, one nonconforming, that will all be sewer, I think you can see that this plan is substantially different and has made substantial changes for the purposes of which it was originally denied, which was creating two nonconforming lots. So again, as the chair lady stated, and I know you all understand, you are not asked to approve this project. All you're doing is making the determination that there has been substantive change and that we can reappear before the zoning board of appeals. That's all. If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is that conformal with the substantial changes, no problem? Just go back to what I said.
Yeah, he's correct. The original proposal for the zoning board would have resulted in two lots that didn't conform as to square footage requirements, right? This is a single-family just.
Right, so they would have been two.
Neither one of them would have had sufficient square.
Area and frontage.
Frontage is normally short. So what he's suggesting with the new plan will result in one lot that only conforms to that dump plus one that will be a variance because it won't conform. But just so I can be clear, the proposal of the sewer being put in, that would serve the existing house, the new house on the new nonconforming lot.
Yep.
Plus four others?
I think two others to the west.
Total of four?
Total of four, yes.
Total of four.
So right now, there are three septic systems out there that could potentially come out of the ground.
And as he points out, the sewer issue is not typically a zoning board of appeals issue.
Right.
And the other end, it's something to get people off septic systems and onto the sewers is a really good thing.
Yeah.
But that's really, I mean, that's sort of a benefit to the side of the lot. But the real issue is this is new proposal substantially different, and I think, you know, they're changing the size of the lots, the frontage of the lots, so in my opinion, that would be a substantial change. It would justify the planning board sending it back to the zoning board for a second vote.
And when you read the actual intent of zoning, it is to enhance the quality of life and the health and safety of the residents of the city. So the addition of this sewer line would do just that, for sure.
See, the raid did a substantial material change and also the increase from 9,400. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Chairman Chair, can I make a suggestion? I mean, generally, the next item would be to look at a number of Form A plans, but I was hoping that maybe we could invite the items 3, 4, 5, and 6, which really are all the same items, the Vista Way Estates subdivision, and Attorney Salino is here with his client, and I thought, I should say, the long suffering, Peter Salino, who worked on this case for quite a while, but I think they're at the finish line, and just as a courtesy to Peter, I'm wondering if we could take those out of order.
Yes, that would be fine with the board. Yes, that's.
Thank you.
Do you have, you know, when it do you before the morning?
Wait a minute. No, I think I have a line.
Yes.
I have to take some of that. I can hear a lot of them.
Alex and me, yes, and Mr. Almeda's here. You want me to put two chairs here?
It's up to you.
That's fine. There you go, Alex.
We got some lines put on our budget.
Oh, I know. I know, it's difficult. You okay over there? You want to move the?
I need a tab. You might come over here in a few minutes or so. Can I just give a little introduction before we hear, here he is, Mr. Salino. This is a subdivision that the planning board approved, a Form C subdivision approved back in February of this year, and it was approved subject to a number of conditions that were included in the decision that was issued or approved by the board. And some of those conditions were required to be satisfied before the board could actually endorse the plan, and once it's endorsed, then it can be recorded and, you know, released and recorded. There were a number of conditions that the board required in terms of changes to the plan itself, the Mylar, the final draft, which Mr. Gordatsky took care of over a period of time. And that left two things that we were concerned about. Number one was the requirement that a covenant be recorded at the registry deeds. And a covenant is the agreement by the developer that they will not sell or build upon any of these lots until the construction of the roadway and the installation of public utilities are accomplished to the satisfaction of the board. So that was one thing we were looking for. And number one was easement, that was required by the private public utilities for the sewer line involved or cornered property. And we worked with Mr. Salino, between Salino over a period of time to Mr. Gordatsky to try and get these things ironed out. I think we're there, am I right?
I believe so, Mr. Kenny.
What was your thought first, Mike?
For purposes of the record, my name is Peter Salino. I am the attorney for Mr. Almeda. I think everyone knows Mr. Gordatsky. He is the engineer for the project. As Mr. Kenny alluded to, we've been working on a Form D covenant revising, rewriting, which was approved today by Mr. Kenny as the content, and Mr. Kenny was signed when I got here by Mr. Almeda. Additionally, Mr. Kenny asked for a trustee certificate. The property is owned by a nominee trust. I know many of you probably understand what that is, but customarily, a nominee trust requires the consent, concurrence, and direction of the beneficiaries of the trust to act. So I prepared a specimen, direction of beneficiaries form, as well as a trustee certificate. Mr. Kenny had two edits, which I made this afternoon. I also had Mr. Almeda sign those, or that document, just now. And finally, Mr. Kenny referred to an easement relative to a small piece of property that's depicted on this plan. I went back and forth a little bit this afternoon with Paul Ferland to get that document to a point where he was comfortable with it, and I also had my client sign that document as we arrived here tonight. So I believe that we are compliant with the conditions that Mr. Kenny just outlined. And I don't know if there are any, Bill, are there any engineering-type considerations you have for Mr. Gordatsky?
I think what we're going to ask of Mr. Gordatsky is on the Mylar, which will eventually be recorded, that we have to enter the date, the covenant, the sign, and the date of the original decision that was issued. But I'll talk with him after, just do mysterious things and make sure that.
Okay.
The documents, you're going to record, match the references on the plan that's going to be recorded.
Okay.
So probably I should talk with him this evening or tomorrow morning, he rings to get back to you here. What I'm going to propose to the board is that, once we have in hand all these documents signed and ready to go, that we give it to Mr. Salino to go to the registry. He's been there before, he knows how to go to the registry.
Little bit.
And to do a rundown on the title, just as if you were recording a mortgage or some other document, to make sure that the owner is still the owner, and then to record the documents at the owner's expense and give us information of the proof that we're done and recorded information. Does that sound?
That's fine.
I think we've talked about it.
Yep.
It's trying to get on record, and that's what I recommend to the board. But all these documents have to be extended extensively.
That's a fair way to put it.
Yeah. I think they're ready to go. Your judgment? I think the goal that we would be would be to direct the chair to endorse the plan that was approved in February, and to release that with the covenant, the easement, trustee certificate to Mr. Salino for recording. You have to give the title and have it recorded back to us when it's done. Does that cover it?
That covers it from my perspective.
Go. Right. Just so that I'm clear, that does take care of items 3, 4, 5, and 6 on the agenda. So the board knows these are items 3, 4, 5, and 6. And so we are approving and signing Form D1, that's the covenant for Vista Way Estates subdivision, file 19-210, owner applicant Antonio Almeda, trustee of Draper Street Realty Trust.
Correct. And by the way, Chair, would be item number four has already been taken care of by Mr. Gordatsky, it was just a erroneous reference on the final Mylar, it's very recent.
Item number four has been taken care of, and so we'll go to five. Proposed approval of the utility easement as required by condition number 10 of the planning board's decision of February 28th, 2020, approving the Vista Way Estates subdivision plan, and proposed endorsement of original Mylar for approved Vista Way Estates subdivision plan and release of original to attorney Peter Salina for simultaneously recording of the plan, the covenant, and the easement. Do I have a motion?
I motion for I endorse the plan posted in January along with the agreement for the recording of all the items given.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to be folks leave, and just like to add one thing, there are other conditions on that decision that you should keep in mind and pay attention to. This is 16, 17, and 22. These are all conditions that have to be satisfied before the start of construction. What we've accomplished tonight is conditions that have to be satisfied prior to the endorsement or release of the plan, the recording. But these other things have to do with what must be done before the start of construction.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that you've got a copy of the decision, Mr. Salino?
We do, yes, thank you.
So that's the reference, 16, 17, and 22. You should take a look at it.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. When I call you, I'll get you some.
Yeah, well, I need a minute first. He's going to change the things a lot.
I know.
Mr. Gordatsky, let him come in with you or not?
He can if you let him. I didn't know if he was permitted.
Can you come in?
Just sit at the table with the microphone.
Mr. Levin.
Hello.
It's blood soon.
Yeah, I know.
Just so long.
How you doing, boss?
I wrote that as part of it, I think it's similar.
Oh.
I didn't email it to you, but let me, I've got a key, it's very big. Let me email it to you later.
How are you? How's everyone?
Unless you want to take it out.
Oh, yeah.
We got to, we got to.
All right. Whatever you need.
I need some here or some.
Oh, see, man, you've been.
I shrunk it down.
Okay, well, that's okay, too.
You're on the mic, man.
Oh, okay.
I'm here with no mic.
Will you give it to my question, Mr. Levin?
Yes.
The officer that said if I had had more time, I'd have written a short letter. Does that work, Twain?
That's okay, yes, it was.
Bill, I told him to do the same thing, you know. His letter says three pages.
Well, this was two and a half pages.
How are you guys?
We're very well. You?
Okay, now, Chair.
We take an item number seven at this point?
Yeah, this is item seven, correct.
Yes. Request of R G K Realty Trust for the release of lot number six at 15 Chestnut Hill Drive from Covenant.
Yes. My name is attorney Mark Levin, Law Office at 138 Brock Street, 4 of Massachusetts. I'm here with Robert Cifory, who is the trustee of the R K, R G K Realty Trust, and they have a subdivision at the end of Chestnut Hill, which was off of North Main Street, and it was a seven-lot subdivision. Yep. And we now have the last lot under agreement.
I'm sorry, is that six or seven lots?
Six lots.
Six lots.
Oh, six lots. But there was a seventh Form A, that's right, the house on the corner of North Main Street got cut out. So it was six lots in this subdivision. And we've completed substantially the subdivision project. The planner, I had prepared a certificate of performance for this to be released, and we received from the planner through Mr. Sylvia, a list of items, some of them of which Mr. Cifory has already worked on and finished, and some that still needs to be completed. So I had sent over an escrow agreement yesterday after Mr. Kenny sent me a list of what things he was looking for to be completed on Friday, and he's edited a little bit, and that's fine with me. But we are saying we would like to have the release of the covenant so that we will instead put a cash bond up for the work to be finished. We'll sign the agreement, and as Mr. Kenny and I discussed, if there was going to be needed more money than what was done, if Mr. Cifory didn't do the work in a month's time, then he would supply those funds if the city didn't have that. He is asking for one and a half times for what the work that was evaluated by Mr. Sylvia, and that's perfectly acceptable for us. And again, some of the work my client did this past week, because he needed to get it done anyway. There was a house that's being sold, and one of the things involved the house, so that was resolved. But he's still going to do a little more planting of trees, going to put a few lighting in there, and he needs to do a portion of the roadwork that apparently had deteriorated a little bit. They're going to do a resurfacing, ground and resurfacing, just a small area of it. So Mr. Kenny has provided a list to us, and we agreed, well, principally, that we would give one and a half times, assuming that the amounts that Mr. Kenny provides you is sufficient. We would be bringing a bank check for $10,500 with Mr. Cifory's signature agreeing to do the work, and we're asking you with that if we can have our lot released.
Could I just elaborate a little bit on that, just so you know?
Yes.
The items that we identified actually included addition of a street light, planting of some trees, removal of an encroachment, steps from dwelling at 15 Chestnuts could actually encroach onto the public driveway, and within those steps, something we've never seen before, some sort of a gas service mixture that's sticking right out of the step, because I can't think, this would have to be, some deterioration of the surface.
assuming that the amounts that Mr. Kenny provides you is sufficient. We would be bringing a bank check for $10,500 with Mr. Kefory's signature agreeing to do the work. And we're asking you with that if we can have our lot released.
Could I just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes.
The items that we identified actually included addition of a street light, planting of some trees, removal of an encroachment. Steps from dwelling at 15 Chestnuts could actually encroach onto the public driveway. And within those steps, something we've never seen before, some sort of a gas service mixture that's sticking right out of the step. I can't think, this is what I would have to do. Some deterioration of the surface at the cul-de-sac end of the street. Those things, the city inspector, it was covered with an estimate that might be around $6,900 to fix those items. If Mr. Levin correctly states, we've got the request a cash escrow amount of one and a half times. That's about roughly $10,500. There was one other item which I mentioned to Mr. Levin at the end of last meeting. Requirement by the water and sewer department that final as-built of water and sewer construction inspection reports for water and sewer being provided. So that would be one of the other things that, from their point of view, community utilities point of view, they would want for this lot released all to be secured by this cash escrow. Keeping in mind that the only security that the planning board has at this point for the completion of this work is just one lot six, which is left. So we didn't think approved to release that lot without having some substantive security for the performance of this work. Two things, speaking with one of the members the other day. The amount of escrow, you may not think that $10,500 is adequate. That would be a judgment for you to make. And then the other thing that causes me some concern is this. The planning department receives complaints from the city councilors and mayor's office, from citizens, about subdivisions in the community that are never completed. This one's going to be completed, one way or another. We're going to make sure of it. But this particular development, I have heard complaints from people that the subdivision called Lexington Estates down between Stevens Street and Great Avenue remains to be completed. And we're a little tired of hearing community people complain about this. We're certainly tired of the city council coming to me and saying, what is the planning department doing? What is the planning board doing with people who haven't finished one subdivision, get permission to do another one, or the lot's released from other subdivisions? And they're not happy about it. So I think we have to address this issue. And it comes with just one lot at Chestnut Hill. So they want release of that lot. And we look at Lexington Estates, which since the initiation, 2004, 2005, the roadway has never been completed. The base coat's been put, the top coat, two inches, has never been done. The lighting has never been installed. As-built plans are incomplete. And so these things frankly cause us anxiety of the planning department and should raise the question with the board whether it's appropriate to deny the request for one subdivision when another one by the same developer remains incomplete and the subject of a lot of community complaints. So that's an issue I think that you need to consider as a board.
If I may, you know, we're coming in one subdivision to complete that. There's minor amount of work to be done. We want that completed. I have brought Mr. Kenny's concerns to my client on the other project. That's a project where the city of Forever actually has seven lots under Covenant that he can't build or sell without getting that road down. He had planned to work on that this March, but things changed in the world. Right now, his schedule is he's not building anything, any of these lots at this point in time until next year. There's no real market for it, and you can't get many of the people that you would want to work to get things done because they're working on skeleton crews, and they are behind on all their projects. So my client is finishing up as much as he can when he's got one subdivision that has some minor work done that he has one house to sell. And it's done, that whole subdivision. The other subdivision's not complete. He knows it, we know it. It's not intended to be completed until he gets the roadwork done. If he brings excavators down in machinery to dig up the seven lots, which are the furthest lots in the subdivision, he's going to be tearing up a brand-new road if you say you got to do that road first and not just have the binder. Yeah, maybe a little inconvenient. It's getting plowed, it's being taken care of. My client does that work. I mean, he's the one taking care of it right now because it has been taken by the city for the work. So he's still been responsible for that project, but he hasn't finished it. I mean, this year was a very unusual year for most people. I normally wouldn't.
If I could interrupt you.
Sure.
I've heard about this being an unusual year. If that's since 2004, 2005, because I'm not aware of any pandemic between 2005 and 2020 or any other precarious circumstances would have prevented the completion of the top coat on this road. And so I don't want to hear about that. Marketing, real estate is hotter than it's been in years. Houses are flying off the shelf. The workers are available out there. People want to work, they have access to the several lots. You don't have to go over the part that has the base coat already to finish the part that's never been touched. There are other ways to get there. So that's a bogus argument. And I just figured the thing about the pandemic prevented the completion. How stupid did I think we are?
No, he was going to do it.
Can I speak, please, can I speak? Right here, we're talking about Chestnut Hill Drive. I built beautiful six homes. People live there, paying taxes. As I committed to the city, without them even asking me, I paved the road, I did everything I'm supposed to do. I did it all. I dealt with a prior engineer that sent me a letter saying, we only need one street light. We thank you, Mr. Kefory, for doing your work. And everybody in the subdivision is so excited and happy. This is what this is about. I spent over $200,000 to finish the street, no problem. That's my job. No headache to no one. We are here in front of the board. These items were brought after the fact. This road was supervised by J.R. Friar, city engineer. Their consultant, Tibet Engineering, now they're called Escol Engineering. And I took care of everything that I'm supposed to. Couple items, which is in front of the board now, tree planting. This was never mentioned to me. But it's no problem. I told the inspector in the city, if people want trees, let it be. How much is a tree? $300, $400? No problem, I'll take care of it. Second item on the list. The prior engineer says we only need one street light, and I gave him a check for one street light. He didn't mention I want two street lights. I love street lights. As a matter of fact, I encourage people to do it. So they mentioned it could be possibility for another street light. I says, no problem, I'll take care of it. For in the estimate, which is probably about $600, right, in the estimate. The third item, which was steps leading into a house, to take the first two steps down and put crushed stone and stuff to make a walkway to the house, no big deal. I said, how much? Cost $300, he says, $1,000. Those are the minor item. The big picture, I finished the subdivision. Everything is functioning. We emailed the as-built for the street and the sewer and the water and the C R M R 320 to the engineering department. They received it from my engineer. Everything's done. As-built, I have a copy of it, actually. I'll show it to the board. I have a mini copy of it. So I'm committed to take care of everything for the city, right? That's my job. So it's no problem. I'm in agreement on Chestnut Hill Drive to be one and a half time what it should cost. Like Mr. Kenny had mentioned, is $6,900. I'll write a check for $10,500. That's one issue is Chestnut Hill Drive. Lexington Estate, which has, I believe, 36 homes. I believe 36 homes. This was while back. I built all the houses, everybody living there. People that bought a house for 200, they're selling for $360,000. It's a success. What's left to be done is one coat of pavement, which called the top coat. During construction, we don't like to finish the street as we build the homes. You can imagine, I built the homes in sections. I didn't build them in a day or a year. It took me about five years to build them. Obviously, we had up and down. So again, I'm committed that I'm going to go back and topcoat at the beginning of the construction season and finish that subdivision. And you got my commitment on this. This is a public hearing. I'll get that job done. It's my job. I agree with him. No headache to the city. And that's it. Whether it's a pandemic or not, we're not going to use this excuse. I never used, this is the first I hear of Lexington, by the way. So anyway, I'm committed to the board and to the city to take care of it. But now I'm in front of you, asking you to release the slot for double the estimate that I could do in about five days. So that's all. And I'm asking you to vote on it, basically.
Yes.
To accept the estimate that.
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Kefory.
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight and providing a little point on the homes in the city.
Thank you.
That's excellent. And I'm happy to hear that this Chestnut Hill is almost done. And obviously, we've had an issue with Lexington.
Sure.
And, you know, a lot of people in the city have a bad taste in the mouth. But, you know, I understand the weather is getting colder and the cost of materials and labor is getting up higher.
Yes.
So I think in an effort, I know attorney Kenny was very kind in doing the memo of one and a half times.
Sure.
But I think to show good faith in the city, I am going to motion to the board that we hold back three times the amount needed. We hold back $20,000. And I'm sure you'll get that done in a couple of weeks, and we'll be released here, no problem.
Which one? You're talking about Chestnut?
Chestnut Hill, yeah.
Yes.
So how much do you want for that?
Three times as much, so it's $20,000. $6,900 times three.
I respectfully disagree because if you look at the items.
But you'll be getting it done in a couple of weeks.
I understand that, but everybody has to be fair. If you look at the item on the list.
Yes, I saw them.
I already talked to the owners of the house lots. Most of them don't want trees. Okay, I'll get you this in writing.
I think this planning board is wanting to.
We'll just put the trees, it's no big deal. But those trees, the cost, the actual cost is $6,900 that you guys have.
Yes.
Right? So, I mean, I never heard of such thing, holding back three times the estimate.
Well, the covenant's there for a reason. The covenant's there to ensure you complete the work since you haven't completed it, and I believe you will complete it. And I'm just saying to show good faith to the city and the board members that you just hold back $20,000. You're going to finish the lot or release it. It'll get it done probably in about a month. And there's no more, you know, and it gets resolved quickly. That was my thought process.
I've agreed one and a half time. And actually, in actual reality, this work costs $4,000. I agreed to $6,900 because I want them to be happy, you know what I mean?
Or we can wait till you finish it, and we'll release the covenant.
Well, I don't know. I'll go along with $15,000 if you don't mind.
Okay, open it up to the board.
So.
And do you have, Bill?
By the way, this is not an actual thing. We don't have any actual things.
Right, exactly. It's been suggested that it be $15,000 and.
I think the prior question is, are you going to release this at all?
Right.
Lexington Estates drifts.
Well, you have, you have, what, $800,000 to $1 million worth of lots that you have covered it down there.
On Lexington, we have seven house lots. One of them is duplex.
You want to have a board meeting on Lexington?
We're not going to walk away from.
We're here for one meeting.
So we are here for Lexington. I just want to make sure the board just know the following. The actual items on your list, one of them is taking two steps, maybe $400, $500. I put $1,500 because obviously, the inspector of the city doesn't want to go low. So we went triple the price. The trees cost $150 each, we went to 500. So those are the item. The actual cost of the pavement, which we met with the inspector at the job site, and the cost was actually $3,000, I have a bill. So in total cost of what I needed to do at Chestnut Hill, the amount would be around $4,000 to $5,000. I agreed to $6,900. Then Mr. Bill Kenny suggested to the board we go one and a half times the $6,900. That brings it to $10,500. So we're in agreement with $10,500. So if you feel more comfortable, I'm willing to go to $15,000. So I'm asking the board to vote on an amount of $15,000. No, and those items don't cost more than $5,000. So that's three times the estimate.
Yes.
I would, I would probably make that motion to hold back $15,000. But I would also just like, so everybody is at ease. I would like a schedule for Lexington, if we can at least go that far, and give us a schedule of what is going to be done on Lexington. We're not asking, we're not asking for money on Lexington.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Just give us a schedule.
Sure.
As to what, well, how you plan to proceed? Because we answer the higher up also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How are we going to proceed?
On Lexington, you have my word. The next construction season, because there's some work to be done, like raising, you know, you're a construction person.
I know. And that's why with the cold and stuff and nobody working, that's.
No, no, that's not the point.
That's crap.
No, no, no.
That's crap. Because I got more guys that'll work, and you know Bobby.
Yeah, that's not the reason. So to prepare the road for pavement and get somebody now with the cold weather, I don't like to pave any roads.
No, I understand.
You know what I mean?
I know. But give us a schedule.
My schedule, I'm going to give you right now, beginning March.
I want it right.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I want it right. Mr. Levin, you can submit it to Mr. Kenny. What kind of attack is for Lexington so that we can, after this is set, we can stop putting that to rest.
All right. So by, I just want to mention to the board.
What is the deadline?
Deadline. By June 30, it'll be paved. I'm just going to, I'm going to put the date now. She's taking minutes at the meeting.
But again.
No problem.
I got a letter from the attorney to the planner to stating that this is what we plan on doing. The weather's coming back. It's cold, we're going to start in the spring. We're going to be done by such and such a time. And this way, we can, yeah, let's get this one on the way, and then let's jump right on that one and get this all resolved.
If I may, on Lexington Estates, we have a $90,000 level credit from 2004 to 2005. What is that worth today, 2020?
But you got seven.
So do you think with Lexington, he's got to write and include a requirement issued by the board that the letter of credit amount be increased to a reasonable amount? It's very nice for Mr. Kefory to promise you June 1st, it'll be John 230. That's worth.
It was actually, the letter of credit was reduced. It had been.
Yeah, it was higher than that.
It was much higher.
It was issued a year after it was issued for reasons unknown.
It was the city, the city, the Bay Coast. The Bay Coast contact of the city wasn't your Bob.
I just want to say.
And they said, the city wants us to reduce the letter of credit.
But one second. On Lexington Estate, Bay Coast Bank is the holding mortgager on the subdivision. And when you have a bank behind you, actually, the bank protects everyone. Doesn't care what I do, right? So you have a bank that has a note, and then you have on top of this a letter of credit for the paving of the top coat, okay?
Seven lots.
That's done. Now, as far as the paving of the top coat, I will go for cost estimates, right? I'll put it down of what X, Y, and Z will charge to top coat. I already went for one estimate. It's about $40,000 plus or minus. The next guy could be more. So we'll provide the board with cost estimate also to top coat that section of the street. So bottom line, we'll come up with that estimate.
I mean, I know we've got lots and everything else, but when I was on the board in another town, we are not in the real estate business. I've always frowned upon holding lots. I don't want lots, I want cash.
Agree with you.
I want the city to hold cash.
Yes, yes.
The city's going to take a lot and hold it, then sell it, then pay. That's too much of a runaround. I mean, hopefully, moving forward, you know, we change some of the policy where, you know, holding the lots.
Well, you have a letter of credit for $90,000, too.
Correct, well, it was 300, and it went to 90.
It was the city that reduced.
I know, I know.
The city reduced it.
But you asked, you didn't know how much it was, but it was 300.
Yeah, I didn't remember.
So the city is holding a letter of credit on one item, the paving of the top coat that cost $40,000 plus or minus. They have a $90,000. So it's double what it should cost.
Has that road been extended into this last seven, six or seven?
No, no, that's, 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 no. So that's the first thing.
So we're only going right up to that?
And I just want to say, that's not my first subdivision I did in Forever, in the city of Forever. I've finished every single subdivision in every single place that I said I'm going to do and I took care of it.
Chair, by the way, $90,000 is not targeted at any particular part of the project. The $90,000 is a lower credit security performance of the agreements that were made when that subdivision was approved. That includes a part of the street which has never even been constructed, which runs on seven or eight lots. It includes the, uh, the top coat on this, uh, on this section that was bottom coated. Uh, and when that's done, uh, they've gotta do a mold of cake, cod burn, and lumen, and seating behind it. They've got to rate, in the process of doing this, they've got to raise all the structures, the van walls and that sort of thing. Uh, they've got to turn over attention points to the city. They've gotta finish their asbells to show us water and sewer. Uh, asbells, they've got water and sewer easements that have to be completed for the city. This is not a ninety thousand dollar job. Ninety thousand dollars for two thousand and five is not enough. So it's not targeted just at the top of the street. It won't be so bad. That's all you got for all of them.
So, I just wanna say this. At this point, Lexington Estate, no, nobody in his right mind will walk away from eight hundred thousand dollars worth of house lots.
We don't know that they're worth eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, whatever it is, five hundred, three hundred, whatever, whatever number it is. I never walk away from anything. Bottom line is, it's like, I'm committing to the board firm. By June thirty, the top coat, all the items he's mentioning now, they will be done. Okay? Asbells, ponds to the city, some minor details of landscape and lumen landscaping. We'll take care of it. But I built many subdivisions. Those are minor items. The biggest item, when you build a road, you have sewer line in the ground, water line, gas line, that's all been done. All we're talking about is the top coat and other miscellaneous stuff that comes with that. So, bottom line, my commitment to you, again, is what I mentioned, is June thirty, it's a public hearing for Lexington. So, and we'll continue to move forward for that subdivision. But we are here in front of you for Chestnut Health. Two separate people own that, two separate entities, basically. You know? I'm asking the board to release it for fifteen thousand dollars, bottom line. Is three times the actual cost as she, as, as she suggested.
Question to you, Bill. What would have stood aside, our city people who live in that area and also our planning board?
Satisfied with people in that area, they want the street top coat. They want, they want the street was never built, built, they didn't buy into the subdivision, it was advertised as a completed subdivision. They haven't got wilderness behind the lots and something. They have low street lights. Street lights were a requirement. The plan is dark in the subdivision at the time. Uh, the other thing that I talked about, based on inspection and on the site today, and based on requirements that they're completing in accordance with the rules and regulations of the subdivision control regulations that the city has adopted. So this is, this is what the people are looking for. And I think you really have, you know, we're talking with Lexington Estates. And the only reason we're talking about Lexington Estates today is because I put to you the question, does the board want to release Chestnut? When Lexington's definitely done? And, and we're talking about what's gonna be done in June. But what happened to June of two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand eight? Fifteen years. Didn't walk away from it? There's done other subdivisions in other places in the city and other cities. You know, that's, I think, maybe you wanna ask the lobby department to, to give an opinion on that. Can, can you involve the release of one lot in Chestnut when the developers in the fourth round on Lexington? I don't know the answer to that. I'm not prepared here as a lawyer. I'm prepared here as a quern and somebody's related to give the frustration that the city council or residents feel when this sort of thing transfers.
Can I, can I say something to the board? It's, it's just, it's just, it's the first time I hear about Lexington Estate through Mr. Kenny's office. Just now.
Last week.
Last week?
Last week.
None of this, I just wanna say, none of this stuff, none of this stuff was mentioned to me ever. I don't run away from my obligation. Lexington Estate is one project-
Fifteen years.
I understand, Bill, but it took me seven years to build all the houses, there's thirty five. I did this, I did the subdivision in three sections. I didn't do it over one day. But regardless, like I said, Lexington is one issue. Right now, in front of you, is Chestnut Health. It's owned by two, Chestnut Health is owned by one trust. Lexington Estate is owned by another trust. So why don't we finish one thing at a time instead of mixing everything? I already committed to you that I will take care of.
If you wanna put Lexington on next agenda, then we'll do that. And we'll come in and provide you with a, a detailed schedule.
Right now, I'm asking the board to vote-
Two different things.
On three times the estimate that was provided to you guys, which is fifteen thousand.
I wasn't prepared to argue about Lexington tonight.
For Chestnut Health, not for Lexington.
I understand, but-
Lexington, you have a hundred thousand and you have seven house lots. I know you're not in the business of selling lots, but bottom line, it's gonna get done. So I'm trying to get those minor items done on Chestnut and just finish, turn it over to the city. And finish all the items on it. That's what we're here for.
The biggest, but the biggest problem, Mr. Cefory, we have, and you know this well, is because of a couple of contractors. Right now, with city council and a few streets that are very, you know what I'm talking about.
I don't, I don't.
No, I'm saying, but you know, there's, there's not-
I know this is an issue.
But you know that there are contractors that are not very, very-
Obviously, yes.
Okay, and we have a couple of roads up in the, you know, south end that, that are very bad and people are under water and everything. So we're trying to now, it's putting back a black cloud over everybody. To, to finish up what their obligations-
No problem, Mr. Cefory. I just wanna mention to you, I have letters from, from your city engineer thanking me. I paved Chestnut without anybody, I didn't even go in front, I did it. I'd never been in front of your board to pave Chestnut. That's my obligation. That's my, that's my job to take care of the road. And I did it. I did the road and I finished it. Look, I have pictures, I'll show you. It looks gorgeous. That's what I'm here for. I finished it without anybody telling me what to do.
All I'm saying is, because of a few guys, right now, city council has, has inundated every, with, uh, with, uh, with complaints about all these other ones. And it's not just you. It's everybody that's come before, Bill knows. They're, they're clamping down on everything now. Now, it's like, okay, let's button up some loose ends. It's been long enough. And that's all it is. I agree they're two separate items, but we have you here now. And that's the reason why we just wanna bring it up.
No problem.
We put you on the agenda, on the, on the next agenda. And for the next meeting, come up with a plan for Lexington Estates.
For Lexington Estate, no problem, no problem.
And we understand they're both, you know, they're both two separate items. We can agree on this with fifteen or whatever.
Fifteen thousand, if you agree on this, I'll come back.
Laurie's fine with that, it's fine.
And writing for you, it's no problem. So if you wanna take a vote, it's fine, fifteen thousand.
You fine with fifteen?
Anyone else wanna talk, any other numbers?
Anybody else?
Through the chair. I hear something that in twenty years that I've been on the planning board, and you know, less than today. Seems to me that's a problem beyond the scene and that we're just getting to know it right now. We know what you can produce and you're doing a good job. So at this point right now, here is Mr. Kenny and the Department of Sania. Just a suggestion, just a suggestion. Maybe we should table this. Go somewhere and fund with the city law department and let them give us a new, an answer which is correct. It's done and no more bakery beyond the scene. So that's just a suggestion that I made to my colleague, to you, through the council. I'll try to back it.
That's all right.
And to Mr. Kenny. So, with that-
I'm sorry.
With that, I'll leave to Mr. Kenny, to you, and the rest of my team.
I just wanna, I just wanna say, I mean, she suggested, yeah, let's go back. So she, we, we said seven thousand, then we went up to ten thousand five. Then I suggested fifteen thousand. I have a buyer on this house. This house is built on Lot Six and they sold their home. So, if I will go along with holding twenty thousand dollars on Chestnut, I'll accept to come in front of the board for another meeting with detail, as you suggested, of how I intend to proceed with the other subdivision. And you have my commitment already, I already said it. What we're gonna do, and you wanted a writing, we'll come for another hearing on that separate issue. It's no problem, I'll appear in front of the board. So.
But if, um, understand, did Mr. Kenny, right, we do not have enough in the ninety thousand dollars to actually hold. It should be increased?
The letter of credit's in a willfully in an ad going back to two thousand and five-ish. And the increase in price of doing this sort of work. And I spoke with the city engineer and, and Mr. Cefory from the Department of Public Utilities today and looking at what needs to be done down there. The lighting, the street itself, construction, the additional streetlights, ninety thousand is, is-
Well, it's what, the city was the one that reduced it. It wasn't my client.
Well, what do you mean the city reduced it? You requested the reduction.
That's okay, so can I, can I-
The city engineer-
But I can't speak for what the planning board did back in two thousand and five, not even to these people.
So, I just wanna say, as far as Lexington concerned, I'll appear in front of the board with estimates. And we will meet with the city officials to go over the estimate to make sure what you guys have is enough, regardless of what happened in the past. That's a whole separate issue. I will address this before I come to the meeting with the planning director and the city officials. And come up with a, with someone in agreement with all of us.
I have another question.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Attorney Kenny, Bill Kenny, Director, the covenant for Lexington. Can we, I don't know what the covenant reads. Can the city theoretically foreclose on the lot in order to finish the paving if it's not done by next October first or something?
Yes.
My recollection is that that covenant on Lexington does not specify a completion date.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My recollection is that the covenant on the Lexington lots does not specify a completion date, which probably should have, but that was not due in this board or this planning director.
But in, in our agreement-
We can make that an agreement.
But we can add that into an agreement, that there's a deadline or-
Can amend the covenant?
Correct.
Can amend the, uh, uh-
Yes.
I'm just trying to facilitate-
Yes, yes, that's just like that.
The seven lots, he's not gonna walk away from seven lots.
Just so that we can facilitate, we can, we can hold back twenty K. I'm sure Mr. Cefory's gonna get that done in a month or so. We'll get the money back. And then next year, if he doesn't get Lexington done, the city has authority to go ahead and pay top dollar to get it done.
Yes.
Hopefully, I just wanna facilitate it.
Yeah, that's fine.
It wouldn't affect all of us.
If you have the top dollar in your pocket, right now, you've got ninety thousand, which is not enough.
And you got seven lots.
We could theoretically-
Mr. Cefory says, you're not in real estate.
No, we're not.
You're selling these lots and villages and it's just- So I think the board, if I may, has an option at this point. One thing you could vote today to release this lot, Lot Six.
For twenty thousand.
In exchange for an escrow agreement and an amount of money, which I'm just hearing twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Okay, so then that would be the end of it. Or you could say, before we do that, we'd like our legal department to tell us whether we're within our right to withhold approval on Chestnut because Lexington has not been finished. And that's the sort of thing that the community, the city council, the mayor, the public is wondering. Why would they get a release of Lot Six on Chestnut when they haven't finished fifteen years of Lexington? And I don't know the answer, whether you're entitled to do that or not. It's a legal question that the law department can answer. So if that's the route you wanna go, you would table this request tonight. Put it to the law department, can we withhold Chestnut because Lexington's not done? And see what they tell you. Then we'll know.
So, you're saying- So you're saying a house that's there, if someone wanted to move in next week, we'll wait until next year because some other project isn't done where this one will be done?
Like, like I just, I just wanna say, I mentioned-
Two separate contracts with the city. So that means if Staples doesn't deliver you pins and you have another contract than the little paper, because they deliver the pins, you're not gonna pay him for the paper.
Like, I just, I just wanna say, like I said to the board- No one asked me to finish-
I'll bring a, uh, Superior Court action.
No hearing here was held for Chestnut. I finished Chestnut on my own. For one lot. I have seven lots. Nobody walks away from his lots on Lexington. That's a separate issue. It's a whole separate issue. So I'm asking the board for twenty thousand that you suggested. You take a motion to vote on this issue. And then we'll go forward to the next one. That would be the appropriate thing to do, in my opinion.
Excuse me, Mr. Cefory. Bill?
Yes.
How long would it take to get that opinion from the legal department?
Hold on.
No, I, I don't, I like, I can prejudge it to what Kenny do, but I think if we get a priority, you know, treatment in a couple of weeks, I really, I, it's not something that they would, uh, delay. It's not something that the community would honestly delay. It's, it's, you know, once you get that opinion, then you're up. And you're not going forward. What leverage you have in dealing with people that don't complete their jobs.
And if we were to obtain that opinion within the next, say, two weeks, would we be able to hold another planning board meeting to take this one matter up?
We'd see the reason why not.
I, I, look, Gloria, you're a lawyer. Two separate names, two separate subdivision. Mr. Chair.
As Director Bill Kenny said, it's a gray area that needs to be researched for the answer. I, I, I mean, he, he said it. We don't, neither Attorney Levin or Ryan or Bill Kenny know.
So you're saying that this, this lot can't be released until next year when the other subdivision's done?
No, I'm just saying, I just, we have a buy.
That's what you're saying, it's ridiculous.
It's based on the precedence that he wouldn't be able to get a building permit if he owed taxes on another one of his properties. I understand about the different entities.
There's no war for that.
But that, I'm just explaining what the board is thinking.
Look, I just, why don't, have you had a-
There's no law that supports that.
I just wanna ask the board, have we had a-
So, so last week, he brings this up, the first time. So in one week's time, this guy's supposed to jump through a hoop to have this decided where this wasn't on the agenda, we weren't even talking about this on the agenda tonight. We had one matter only. And I promised Mr. Kenny, it was to get him the research. I haven't got the title work back to confirm what he has and the old files. I just gotta get those up. And I promised I would get those, but that was just last week. And I, I had fourteen other closings I had to do last week. And I have one tonight when I leave. So, I mean, not sitting around here, and I'm sure Alan Rumsey is not sitting around just waiting for this to come. It could be a month or two from now.
I, I just wanna say to the board, again, nobody asked me to finish Chestnut. And I finished it. This is the first, last week, I hear about Lexington. Like I said, it is my obligation. It is my job to finish the road. I, there's a bank involved, Bay Coast Bank, that foreclosed on me if I didn't finish Lexington. There are seven house lots valued at X amount of dollar with the houses and that I'm gonna build and finish. I don't know, put a number, five, six hundred thousand. I am not, by all means, gonna walk away from any of this stuff. Here, I'm, I'm in front of the board because this house is built in soul. And this is the first, I have a letter from your city engineer, says, you paved the road, you have one light, you're all, all set to release the subdivision. I'd love to show it to you guys.
That's not necessary.
You know what I mean? I have it in writing here, from the prior engineer, prior to Mr. Kenny, right? And I, you know, I'm willing to work with anybody. Here is at heart, I have a house that I sold, people sold their house. I'm willing to hold, instead of seven thousand, twenty thousand dollars. And, and it's just simple like that. And then we'll go on and finish the other project with all the paperwork between lawyers. That's, I'm asking your vote, Mr. Chair.
I have no objection if Mr. Kenny wants to call Betty Ann Mullins at Bay Coast, say, you wanna increase the letter of credit. If he says he needs it, that was what the city agreed to before to reduce it to. There was a three hundred thousand dollar one before. It was the city that agreed to reduce it.
I mean, prior, prior to that, but, but nonsense, because I'm gonna finish the project anyway.
So you can always ask them, we'll be happy to execute the documents to give them that. They got the security anyway. They got seven lots to puncture on, they have no problem with this.
So I'm really asking you to make a vote to hold the twenty thousand dollars in escrow.
Bill, would you be more inclined to that, back to bring that ninety back up to three hundred thousand on a letter, on a letter of credit? On a letter of credit?
I've asked the consulting engineer, that was the one that might take the, the work. So before I have that in hand, I would wanna, you know, predict what we would request the increase to. I know for sure ninety's not gonna be.
Right, three hundred would, would be a lot closer.
Maybe it would, I, I, you know, without, without the input from the city engineer.
Either that or I'll finish the street, it's no big deal. So please, I'm asking you to entertain a motion.
Any more questions from the board?
Can I make a motion that we hold back twenty thousand dollars to release the covenant on Chestnut? And, and then hopefully in the future, obviously, Mr. Cefory knows his obligations and we will, we will be on top of him.
Sure.
But let's separate both items for now. But again, we trust in your goodwill and I'm sure you'll get Chestnut completed.
You got it.
That's my motion.
But I'd also like to add to that, that we get a schedule, and we put Mr. Kefory on the agenda for the next meeting, bring this up, and then also, Dr. Betty Ann Mullins can see while Bill gets some numbers together to see what that letter can be increased to.
Sure.
They won't have an issue with that.
Could I just suggest on your motion, that it's for 20, and it would be to direct the chair to sign the escrow agreement to be agreed upon between me and Mr. Levin. I've got a draft of the museum.
We have it now, yeah.
I can have a completion-
Delegate to us the responsibility for coming up with the final language, direct the chair to sign it in exchange for each other.
And could I also, could I also add a completion date to Chestnut as well, just so that we can-
We'd said November 1st already.
Okay, thank you, I hadn't seen that.
He already made it in there.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that motion. So, made a motion?
Oh, and you amended it to add to, so now I do need a second to his amendment?
Second to that amendment?
You, we need a second.
For that amendment?
I second.
Beth made the motion to hold the $20,000, and in addition to that, it's going to be all put in writing and-
For Lexington.
For Lexington, yes. And do we want Mr. Kefory to come back next meeting?
Can I suggest something about the meeting? As soon as they're ready with all their estimates, they schedule a meeting, I arrive in front of you, no problem. So, we have to be in agreement with their numbers, I guess, or if you don't want, that's fine.
Well, it'll be a month from now, it's 19-
Okay, right now, it'll be next month.
Okay, very good then, perfect.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, just 11, I'll talk to you tomorrow, and take a look at the redraft that I did.
Yep, no problem. Just make the call for it.
20 is the amount, yeah.
You can hold it, and then you can hold it.
Hold on a second, just that, this is the final format, yeah, this is what you're trying to do.
I'm sure you'll get it done, just to keep the communication.
Like I told you, it's because of a couple of people that, I know, okay, there's friends of mine and people we all know, and now they're going through the same thing now.
Mr. Kefory, that's why I said, show good faith, hold back in time, just show good faith, to say like, just to see, say, hey, I'm going to do it, I'm going to get it done in a month. That's why I suggested three times. The market's awesome right now.
I'll take them if you don't want them.
We want to do, we want to do it by the citizens too, so it's, it's been, it's been, it's been-
But I'm tired, it's going to be tough going forward, because everybody, especially with site plan review.
Okay, so, I signed as the majority, yes.
The one time we did it, they're all on you. That's what I said, like, he seems pretty good, maybe just a communication issue.
Very good.
We just had to find an agreement, and everybody was happy, and keep Bill happy as well.
I don't want to battle and delay, like-
No, you got that sold.
Let's make it, let's make it happen, practice for the city, you know?
We may just sweat a little bit, we may just sweat a little bit.
Not always easy.
Thanks a lot, nice to see you, nice to see you, by the way. Mario, nice to see you, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
See you.
Stay healthy.
All right, thank you. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, it's already sold.
Well, I could be wrong, I could be wrong.
Would you like to take a short break?
Sure, I could, you're going to go to the restroom, or we got a-
All right.
An hour's break?
It is quarter of seven, we're going to take a short break.
How do you go take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break.
Bill, five-minute?
All right.
Calling the meeting back to order, and it is-
Nobody's waiting for us, officer, I do.
Two minutes of seven. And, we are now on item number two, which is Form A, is application for endorsement of plans believed not to require approval. And A is file number 20-1469. Owner applicant is Louis Andre. The location is 954 Plymouth Avenue, assessors map number F-26, lots 72 and 48.
General Chair?
Yes.
If I may, tell you that with respect to all of these items, I know we need to have a separate motion and a second, and a vote on each.
Yes.
But I will tell you upfront that, you know, rather than repeating myself X number of times, I have reviewed all of these, A, B, C, D, E, and F. Each of them involve creation of lots on the public way, and each of them involves creation of lots that will satisfy the frontage requirements on their own, or have benefit of variance that will make them okay. So, all of these, my recommendation on each of these is that the board direct the chair to endorse these plans' approval under the subdivision control law not required. So, the rest is up to you guys.
Okay, now, would we like to take them separately?
Sure.
Okay, and so on that item, do I have a motion?
On the first item-
Yes, that's on-
Form A on Niagara, yeah. I make a motion, we approve, as presented, the A and R.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have item B, file number 20-1470. Owner applicant, Nod Hellstedt II. Location, 502 506 Fourth Street. Assessors map, I-12-41. And, as Bill has stated, everything is in order. So, do I have a motion?
I have motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I, number C, file number 20-1471. Owner, Judith Vanderpool. Applicant, Joseph Maderis. Location, 8 Clinton Street. Assessors map, number S-1740. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and, and again, we are speaking of applications of endorsement of plans believed not to require approval. We're on item number D.
I need a second for that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item number D. Owner applicant, Thomas Goslin and Richard Almeida. Location, S Beach Street and Och Street. Assessors map, G-22 to 33.
I make a motion, we approve the Form A, as presented.
I have a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and item number E, file number 20-1473. Owner applicant, Salavi Realty Two Second LLC. Location, 327 Quincy Street. Assessors map, that's a T, -19-55.
Make a motion to approve?
Do I have second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And E, is file number 20-1474. Owner applicant is the congregation of the Holy Union of the Safer Hoss. Location is 550 and 570 Rock Street. Assessors map, O-2-16 and 17. And-
I need to abstain from this one.
All right, we have one abstaining.
I make a motion, and we approve the Form A as presented.
Second. Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it is noted that we have one abstaining, no one against, opposed. And, we have approval of the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes, everybody had a copy, I believe they did.
Um-
I believe so.
You were absent at that meeting?
Oh, I'm, that's right, I couldn't, that's right.
I make a motion to approve the August 10th meeting minutes.
Very good. And Mario, would you second that? Approval of the minutes?
I'll second.
Second, yes. And I, I'll, I'm approve, all approval is Mario, Gloria, and myself as John and Beth were both absent at that meeting. Vote to adjourn. Somebody's trying to make that motion.
Oh, we haven't been here long enough.
Oh, okay.
Motion?
Mario, mark, second. All in favor?
Aye.